It's early. Welcome, we're gonna have a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is certified by the United States of America and to be a valid for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the routine justice of law.
Roll call please, Ms. Garza.
Yes. Chairman Williams.
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Kiefer.
Here.
Mr. Albrecht. Mr. Di Maria.
Here.
Mrs. Mr. O'Hanlon.
Here.
Mrs. Seberg.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Ms. Don. Ms. Putra.
Here.
Thank you, Mrs. Garza. Are there any additions and corrections to the agenda this evening?
Yes, sir, under consent agenda personnel, ratification of personnel, and under discussion agenda, we're gonna move the National Bullying Prevention Month presentation into spotlights.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda, superintendents announcements and spotlights, Mrs. Radford.
Thank you Chairman Williams, Dr. Newman, to other members of the board, good evening to you tonight, and good evening to everyone that has joined us for our meeting this evening. At this time, I would like to introduce Dr. Rebecca Stone, our Executive Director of Student Services, who will come at this time and share information about what some of our schools are doing in recognition of National Bully Prevention Month. Dr. Stone.
Good evening, Dr. Newman, Chairman Williams, members of the board. As you know, October is designated as National Bullying Prevention Month, and while our schools work very hard to prevent bullying year-round, this month does give us an opportunity to bring a little more attention and focus to the topic. So our schools have engaged in a variety of activities this month, which include classroom lessons on the impact of bullying and bullying prevention taught by our school counselors, public service announcements on our broadcast systems with anti-bullying messages and quotes, talking about kindness and ways to treat each other, spirit weeks, things like team up against bullying, wear your favorite sports team, put bullying to rest, wear your PJs to school, a blue-out day, as blue is the color for National Bullying Prevention Month, lessons about kindness at Baldwin Intermediate School, students make up the "I" in kind literally by standing in a kindness display in the hallway. The OHS Fall Concert featured a song with anti-bullying messages that was chosen by the students and explained to the audience prior to the song being sung. OHS is also creating a video that will be done at the end of the month by the students, and I'm sure will be shared with all of you. The list goes on and on, and each of our schools has really done a great job. However, today, we would like to spotlight one specific activity, so here to share with us one of the great activities that are going on is Dr. Jones from Williams Elementary.
Good evening Chairman Williams, Dr. Newman, and board. I'm delighted that I have two wonderful school counselors, Lee Corner, Amy Miller, and we meet every week, and they came to me and they had an activity that they wanted to do for Anti-Bullying Month. So we did classroom lessons, we did presentations on the broadcast, but we wanted to do something to let students know that when you bully, you have a wrinkled heart, but when there's kindness, your heart swells and then gets bigger. So we talked to students about what is something you can say that is kind, so others will know that you're not a bully. So I present to you my counselors and students from Williams Elementary.
Thanks so much for having us. So I'm Lee Corner, as just said, one of the school counselors.
I'm Amy Miller.
And these are three of our wonderful student ambassadors who are doing like a leadership track and helping us out, so we thought who better to come help talk about it than some of our student ambassadors. Do you guys want to say your first name?
My name is Amy.
My name is Chloé.
David.
Rebecca.
And you guys are in what grade?
Fourth.
Excellent. So the first thing we did is we went on broadcast and we introduced the topic of anti-bullying. We talked about when you say mean things or do mean things, every single word crinkles up the heart. When you open up the heart, there are wrinkles that you cannot erase, but what you can do is put a Band-Aid on it by making someone's heart swell. When you make the heart swell, those wrinkles kind of disappear a little bit, and it makes you forget about them. So, the mantra we've had them say is, before you speak, think and be smart, it's hard to fix a wrinkled heart, and that's what's been in our display. And so each student was asked to write on a paper Band-Aid, write an explanation of what they can do to swell someone's heart and to put a Band-Aid on a heart. Absolutely. And we thought we'll have the ambassadors each give you an example of something that might have been on one of the paper Band-Aids. So Amy, do you want to start?
Remember to be kind and nice to others.
And as you can see, this is just a small poster, it's actually quite a big installation at this point, but this is a small poster showing what it looks like. At Weems, where they have the rainbow car, and then they have Band-Aids all around it. And lastly, we also brought some spare Band-Aids, so we can invite anyone who wants to at the end to fill out their own Band-Aid on how they can help a rainbow car, and you can either come to Weems and bring it to us and put it on our wall, or you can mail it to us, too. We would love to have some extra Band-Aids in addition to all of our students.
Yeah. Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you, Weems Elementary. And thank you, Dr. Stone. Okay. At this time, we'd like to acknowledge our Apple and Pear Awards. The school board continues to recognize the outstanding contributions made by instructional and support employees through the Apple and Pear Award Program. The Apple Award is given to instructional or licensed personnel, and the Pear Award is given to support personnel. At this time, we'd like to begin with Baldwin Elementary School, Robin Pope, Special Education Teacher. Robin Pope is a highly qualified special education teacher. She is a hands-on teacher who helps children face and overcome challenges daily, hourly, whenever necessary. Ms. Pope is highly organized and keeps a very structured class. The classroom materials are labeled, schedules are clearly printed and used by the students, and she sets the bar high for all of her students. Congratulations to you, Ms. Pope. Next, from Jenny Dean Elementary School, we have Lauren Tierney, ESOL Teacher. Ms. Tierney has always been a great support and co-teacher, and has gone above and beyond this year. Ms. Tierney does everything she can to offer extra support to the students at her school. She's always a positive voice and a listening ear for the staff and her students. Congratulations. From Round Elementary School, Karen Huff, second grade teacher. Karen Huff is a role model for all. Her positive attitude about learning is conveyed to her students on a daily basis. She is quick to incorporate new ideas, strategies, and programs into her classroom. On any visit to her classroom, you will find students engaged, collaborating, and having conversations that enrich and extend their learning. Ms. Huff's commitment to students, staff, and families is admirable, and she is an asset to the Round community. Congratulations, thank you. And now from Weems Elementary School, Amber Lee Cho, Special Ed, Self-Contain. Special Education Self-Contain Teacher. Amber Lee Cho demonstrates she is proud to be a Weems teacher. Her number-one priority at work is taking care of her students and making sure that they get what they need. Her students are encouraged to be who they are, and she does not expect them to fit into the everyday mold. Her room is a safe haven for them and anyone else in the building. She is welcoming and always willing to help others when possible. Congratulations to you, Ms. Cho. And now we have Baldwin Intermediate School, Laura Perez Ruiz, Lead ESOL Teacher. Ms. Perez Ruiz is a wonderful addition to the Baldwin Intermediate School family. Her energy and positivity are contagious. She shows much-needed flexibility throughout the school day. She jumps in whenever she is needed and is always willing to give of her time to help, including staying after school to translate at parent meetings. Baldwin Intermediate is so happy to have Laura Perez Ruiz as a part of their staff. Congratulations, thank you. From Mayfield Intermediate School, Helen Wise, Special Education Teacher. Helen Wise is a fantastic teacher who knows just how to reach students with special needs. She is patient and kind, always going the extra mile to show just how much she cares about them. She has taken on the role of fifth-grade Special Education Department Chair this year and worked tirelessly to develop a schedule that supports both students and teachers. She is an absolute joy to work with. Congratulations. From Metz Middle School, Elizabeth Schoenberger, English Teacher. Ms. Schoenberger is an accomplished English Language Arts teacher. She has an innovative and forward-thinking style of teaching. She introduced the school to a new technology to assist with purposeful classroom management, strategies, and instruction. Assuming the helm as English Department Chair, she has been instrumental in leading the department to favorable gains. Ms. Schoenberger is a consummate professional and highly deserving of the Apple Award. Congratulations to you. And we also congratulate Mr. Jeffrey Osborne from Hayden Elementary School in his absence, as well as Matt McConnell, Biology Teacher from Osborne High School. Thank you. Oh, I thought you had class. I'm sorry. Oh, okay, alrighty, well, I'll continue to go on with this one, okay. From Osborne High School, Matt McConnell. I was told he had graduate class tonight, I'm sorry. Okay. A Biology Teacher from Osborne High School, Matt McConnell has been teaching Biology at Osborne for three years. He relates to the students well and gives them real-world knowledge about life choices and consequences. He has a passion for curriculum development and recently accepted the position of CLT Lead in the department. He is a tremendous help to new teachers and career switchers, sharing ideas for lesson plans and suggestions for best practices in the classroom. He's a great role model for students and staff and an asset to the Osborne High School family. Well, congratulations. These are our Apple Award recipients for this quarter. Congratulations to you. I can get everybody to see Miss Williams. Okay. I think I can see everybody's face, here we go, one, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you. All right. Our Pear Award recipients for tonight, beginning with Baldwin Elementary School, Susan Brotherton, Instructional Assistant. Ms. Brotherton puts 100% of her effort and heart into her time in the classroom. Students are confident that she cares for them and is working to help them be as successful as possible. She's an advocate for students within the school environment, especially when she accompanies students to a general classroom. Ms. Brotherton meets and exceeds expectations and is an asset to her school community. Congratulations to you. Next, we have Darlene Hopkins, Bookkeeper from Jenny Dean Elementary School. Ms. Hopkins has consistently shown her dedication and professionalism throughout her many years at MCPS. This year in particular, she has revealed her financial talents and expertise as the bookkeeper for Dean and for a short time, another elementary school during an employee's absence. Through these added duties and responsibilities, she continued to do so with a warm smile on her face. Ms. Hopkins is always willing to help any staff members and coworkers in need of financial information or assistance by explaining it in a way that is clear to someone without financial understanding. Ms. Hopkins is an exemplary employee of MCPS and continues to make Dean Elementary proud to have her on their team. Congratulations. From Hayden Elementary School, Catherine Lee, Technology Support Specialist. Catherine Lee has patience with those she works with. She gives instructional sessions on how to use laptops, various software programs, email, and all of the technology requirements staff needs to meet their job requirements. She makes herself available to answer questions and assist everyone who needs it, providing excellent customer service to the Hayden family. Congratulations and thank you. From Round Elementary School, Lisa Howchens, Special Education Instructional Assistant. Ms. Howchens goes above and beyond to be a positive role model for the students and teachers in the classroom. She remains calm during challenging situations in the multi-category classroom when students might be experiencing a difficult time. She's very flexible and willing to do whatever is necessary for the benefit of the students in the classroom, even if it means assisting them with a task for longer periods of time. Round appreciates all of her hard work. Congratulations. Next, from Weems Elementary School, we have Jessica Plaken, Instructional Assistant. Okay, alright, she's not here, alright. Congratulations to her. From Baldwin Intermediate School, Orlando Pizarro Mascort, Head Custodian. Mr. Pizarro Mascort is such a wonderful part of the shared Baldwin Intermediate and Baldwin Elementary staff. He is a great team player, he is responsive to every call, and is willing to do anything for everyone. He greets everyone and faces every challenge with a smile on his face. When needed, he is more than willing to fit many additional odd jobs into his busy day. He is an exemplary employee, and Baldwin Intermediate is proud to have him as a part of their family. Congratulations. And from Mayfield Intermediate School, Kim Cappuccio, Fifth Grade Secretary. Kim Cappuccio has a very caring and professional demeanor. She is new to her current role, and she is amazing. She performs her duties in a calm and efficient manner. She is lovely to work with because she will help anyone experiencing challenges in a way that makes staff feel valued and important. Congratulations, thank you. From Metz Middle School, Marissa Reagan, School Nurse. Ms. Reagan is an exemplary Metz staff member who goes above and beyond in her role as school nurse. Ms. Reagan not only oversees the wellness and health of students, but oversees the well-being of the staff as well. When students are in need of health-related items and parents do not have the necessary resources to provide these items, Ms. Reagan takes it upon herself to provide any resources or helpful information that can benefit the family. Ms. Reagan's compassion, caring, and exemplary care are to be commended and appreciated. Congratulations, thank you. Osborne High School, we have Connie Jones, School Administrative Associate. Congratulations, Ms. Jones. All right, from our Maintenance Department, Mr. Don Mills, Maintenance Tech Two Plumber. Don Mills is a Maintenance Two Plumber with the Facilities and Maintenance Department. His contributions go above and beyond completing work requests. Mr. Mills oversaw all of the fire alarm sprinkler inspections over the summer. These inspections were required in order to open up the schools. He also stayed after hours to assist with the transportation break room project, so drivers could use the space when they returned for the new school year. Congratulations, Mr. Mills. And from our Transportation Department, Clarence Johnson, Bus Driver. You brought a huge fan club tonight. Clarence Johnson, or CJ, as he is affectionately called, is an experienced driver who knows the ins and outs of Manassas and the surrounding area. He is always courteous and respectful with his coworkers, the administrators, and especially with his students, which results in smooth school runs. Mr. Johnson has averaged about 100 extra runs over the past two years, which has helped keep the department running smoothly and buses staying on time. Congratulations to you, Mr. Johnson. And speaking of Mr. Johnson, I would like to make note that this week is National School Bus Safety Week, so we ask that you appreciate your appreciation, not only to Mr. Johnson, but to our amazing bus drivers throughout the division that help safely transport our students to and from school every day. Thank you to those of you that are here tonight.
Yeah.
There are no committee reports tonight, and I see Councilwoman Davis-Johnson in the back, so thank you for being here this evening. So since there are no committee reports, next item on the agenda is Board Member Comments, and we're gonna start with our student representative, Ms. Putra.
Good afternoon, students, parents, and community members of Manassas City. We are one quarter into the school year, and we've already seen many great events amongst our school system. Baldwin has had their annual Bonanza last Friday, and it was an absolute success. Children got to dress up and bring their whole family along for a night of Halloween festivities, from face paint in the craft room, to walking through the not-so-scary hallway, to jumping on the two-moon bounces in the game room. It was a joy to see all of the exuberant faces. I had the opportunity to run the spider beanbag toss, and I got to work with Baldwin's Southless and Beyond Kind PTSO. At the event, all the members wore costumes, arrived early, left late, and worked for weeks playing this event. One parent refilled all of the candy bins for the volunteers. He ran around the gym carrying an almost 20-pound bag of candy to ensure that all the games were stashed. Our PTSO worked tirelessly behind the scenes to make these events come to life for our schools. In addition, Jenny Dean has implemented house meetings this school year. Based on those by Ron Clark Academy, the meetings are driven in support of positive behavioral interventions in support of PBIS. Each house serves as a team comprised of staff members and students who serve for their entire time at Jenny Dean. It is a unique and creative cross-age group approach to building a community that will strengthen the social and academic lives of students. It is amazing to see how students and staff at Jenny Dean are collaborating to promote an effective and positive learning environment. Although we are only one quarter into our school year, our students and staff have worked as a team to bring the greatest school year to come. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Putra. Ms. Seberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna keep my comments short tonight, I just want to tell everybody about the new play at Osborne. It is called Newberry Theater Murder Mystery Spectacular: A Farce of the Worst Sort. And then I wanted to ask Mr. Di Maria if he knew what a farce was.
Pretty much my whole life.
It's a comic dramatic work using buffoonery and horseplay, and typically include crude characterization and ludicrously improbable situation.
I get an A for that response.
So it's perfect for middle schoolers on up, and it starts this Friday.
Is that bullying? It's borderline there.
Starts this weekend, Friday and Saturday night, 7:00 PM, and it's also playing next Friday and Saturday night at Osborne High School Theater. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seberg. Ms. Williams.
I have no prepared comments tonight, but I wanted to definitely say I really, really appreciate all of the award winners tonight. We don't only celebrate our teachers, but we also celebrate our staff members, our bus drivers, and I just wanted to let them know I really, really loved this night. And I'm keeping my comments to very minimum because we've got a game to see later tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mr. O'Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations to all the Apple and Pear Award winners, thank you to all the bus drivers, and thank you to Weems for the presentation, and to all the work all the schools do on bullying prevention. And last but not least, go Nets! Thank you.
I'm gonna go out of order here, Vice Chairwoman Kiefer.
I, too, will keep them short, but I just wanted to congratulate all of the award winners tonight as well. I think a lot of the words that I was writing down, that I heard as Ms. Radford was really talking about these individuals, you know, you heard they made people feel valued, they are patient, they oversaw wellness, there's compassion, and I would just say that they're the epitome of what we all should strive to be. And I just want to say what the children presented to us tonight, if only the whole world could think about bullying and what it means as a society, we'd be better off. I think we all have some Band-Aids, we should think about how we can apply them in our own lives as adults to be in service- We should think about how we can apply them in our own lives as adults to be in service and an example to our children. So I thank the presentation and just encourage us all to think about how we stand as society and how we present ourselves to the world. Thank you.
I want to also acknowledge Mr. Williams in the back from MEA. Thank you for being here, and I'm going to do my comments. Thanks to Weems for their phenomenal presentation. It was very inspirational, very incredible to see children thinking that hard. Adults have the same kind of heart as these children, do we probably be in a better place? But thank them for the presentation and congratulations to all the award winners. And I did not forget Mr. DiMaria. I know it was a special night for him, so I wanted to let him go last.
I think it's a special night for everybody. Just a couple of things. The alumni reverse raffle was Saturday night. It was a great success. If you weren't there, you missed it. Next year, October 17th, at the fairgrounds. Mark it on your calendars. Get your tickets early. We were completely sold out before we ever got there. The alumni, we had a 50-50 raffle, three of them throughout the night. The first one was dedicated to the Jenny Dean Memorial for their new statue. We raised 800 and some dollars to give to the city toward that statue. So the alumni not only help our kids, we help our city as well as much as possible. The Weems anti-bullying thing was great. Mr. Williams, you've got a great head of hair there. You look great. So be kind to people. And go Nets! Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any citizens' comments? No one has signed up, I believe, and I don't see anyone rushing to the microphone. So if not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approved the consent agenda as modified.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Handlon, second by Mr. DiMaria, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approved the consent agenda as modified. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it 6-0. The next item on the agenda is the discussion agenda, student achievement and accountability. First up is Metz Middle School's Continuous Improvement Plan with Mr. Dave Rupert.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you for having me. Chairman Williams, Dr. Newman, members of the school board. It's an honor to be here to represent Grace E. Metz Middle School. I stood upon you here last year as first-year principal at Metz, and we talked about some different things that we're going to put in place in terms of block scheduling, common planning for our educators to really professionally align our curriculums, and trying to move the needle. That's what we talked about with staff, is moving the needle, getting stronger from the inside out. So I'm here to share some celebrations with you and some journeys that we're going to continue on as we move forward. All right, well, we have three virtues that we're transitioning with at Metz, and you know, these will be alongside our advisory blocks where we're working with our students with PBIS, but really the three things that we're going to try to base ourselves around are these three virtues: respect, determination, and excellence. You can find a lot of words, there's a lot of different things that are aligned, but these values, I think at the middle school level, they're learning to emerge and become more self-dependent and be more responsible. So respect, determination, and excellence is where we are focused. Common Sense Media Certified School, it's important for digital citizenship in today's day and age for our students and for our staff and, you know, for all parents, everybody. So, you know, that really encompasses a lot of those things, and there's a lot to that that staff and our ITTS, Dr. Coford, work towards. So I'd like to thank him and the staff that are working really hard in terms of those aspects. We had the Manassas City Teacher of the Year for the entire city of Manassas, Randolph Cipio, a math teacher. And as you're going to see in some of our results, Mr. Cipio was our department lead. Ms. Schoenberger, who was honored earlier tonight for Apple Award, was our English department, and I'm really proud of both departments, math and English, and the progressions, and I think that she'll be proud as well. I think, yeah, and Ms. Schoenberger's still here, so appreciate her being here and supporting what we have going on. In terms of some of the things that we'd like to highlight that we're proud of, there's our math end-of-year accreditation score at an increase of nine points. English, which would be more so the reading, the accreditation score increased three points. Writing increased a four points, and our special education English reading score increased 10 points. We still have some ways to go there, but these are huge gains, guys, in terms of English and math, so we're really proud. Areas of strength, again, math and English end-of-year assessment score. If you take a look at the school report card, there isn't a score that's higher in the last five years. So English and math, we have the highest results that we've had in a five-year time period. So this is a testament to a lot of work that our English departments, our math departments that are doing with the common planning, aligning the curriculum, taking a look at data, meeting every week, twice a week, dedicating themselves to being professionals. I'd like to invite any of you to come over and see a planning meeting. They're really, really great to see. Okay? We also increased the end-of-year assessment reporting category growth in 12 of the 14 subgroups in math and English. So every bit, we're getting to. Our focus areas, we're always going to continue to try to close that achievement gap with certain levels, even though we're improving, we want to get to where we're moving to. We also have an adjustment in our science and civics. We've moved to four-by-four types of semesterly schedules so we can really focus in on for our learners that right there for that semester, they can focus instead of going one day, another day, another day. It gets to be a lot with vocabulary for students with their note-taking and those types of things. So the teams are transitioning right now. We're hoping to, you know, reap some benefits in that in the future, but we'll keep you updated on that. In terms of our academic goals, as you can see, our accreditation score, the targets, we've met the targets for accreditation. Reading was at an 80, a score of an 80. Writing was at a 76, and math was at an 80. If you can see, and we don't have the priors there, but like I said, the math was up 10% or 10 accreditation points, and the others were up as well. So, you know, we're keeping that moving and keeping focused in our approach. So creating a culture of excellence, I think that, you know, we do have some surveys, some different types of things. I'm impressed by the staff in terms of the amount of engagement that we have. You know, our target's high in the 90s, and, you know, our actual's in the 90s, so that's something that we want to continue to cultivate and move together in terms of there. We have two other ones, two other KPIs, percentage of staff reporting that they can influence decisions in their school department. That's something that we're, you know, again, first year, second year, third year, we want to make sure that our teams are getting stronger, we're building from the inside out, and people feel that they have that voice moving forward. So I think first year, we had some decisions that we needed to make, that we wanted to go in this direction, and now we're trying to cultivate that. So we'd like to kind of focus a little bit on getting a baseline data on our probationary teachers to see how they're transitioning. So it's one thing when you have veteran teachers that have been through this before, but maybe somebody that's hopping into the profession. So that's a baseline data point that we're going to take a look at to see how we can monitor in the years to come. Forging relationships to support and maximize successes, you know, our KPI, our chronic absenteeism rate is something that we want to work towards. So coming in first year, we wanted to improve. We did, by a handful, I mean, by a very, very small amount. So our goal is to get to the 15%, and we have some efforts that are targeted towards that this year, so we're hoping to report out to you sooner than later that we're moving that needle and move it in the right direction. And then we really want to seek some information in terms of, you know, how are robo-calls on Sunday? What type of customer service are we providing? And seeking some more information from our parents and from our students, as they're the most important to us. Operating effectively and efficiently, we have our schoology. We are one-to-one with students, and obviously our teachers are really transitioning into that as well, so it's a big transition. You know, going, you know, cutting out a lot of that paper, getting a lot of those things, putting a lot of things up into a management system is a transition for our students and for our staff members. So staff really stepped up. Again, you know, when we talk about our digital citizenship, when we talk about our use of technology, we're asking our students to step up, and our staff's doing a really good job as well. So everybody got in and is trained, and, you know, we're all working toward it this year. Findings on our reoccurring findings on our quarterly building inspection, you know, our custodians work hard, our support staff work hard, and to communicate, there was just an email that went out after the first few things this first quarter. Okay, these are the types of things, we don't want any of these to be reoccurring. Let's make sure that we're going back and making this place safe and the best place to be in Manassas. And then the last one is our prepared versus actual budget. So as you know, we have a zero-based budget. We try to really be targeted so we're not being wasteful in any way. In any ways, so I'm really proud that we work with the teams and figure out where we are and get the best out of what we have. So PBIS, last year, we dabbled into PBIS. We're looking at different ways to transition into a middle school model and how, you know, how to get these students engaged and involved. I love the idea with the Ron Clark and working with Dean. I think that that'd be something that I'd love to, we're looking to seek out from members of our PBIS, so just on a separate note, reach out to us, be happy to work with you. That'd be great. But this year, last year, we started quarterly events to reward the students that were doing the right thing, and we, you know, moving the needle with the students, they appreciated that. We also had some restorative practice. We dabbled into that just to talk about, hey, what's going on? Why is this going on? And how can we do better? So, you know, I think that it was pretty basic last year, but again, I think that we moved to where we're setting that up for success. This year, we had over 35 members that wanted to come and join the PBIS committee. I mean, that's a huge committee, and that's a large, so people want to be involved. So we're working with a consultant who's fantastic, our team. We've had to trim the team down, but we've also wanted to work with a support. We've worked it to where we have a core team and a support team. So the support team can keep an eye on the core team, and we can work better together. So, you know, we had that training, that's really, we're really instituting things in the next couple of weeks. Those things are going to be coming out for our staff members, and we're going to roll out those common expectations for our students. So we're really happy about the progressions that we have there, and we want to have a systematic way to build capacity for everyone. And being transparent, authentic, and consistent, I think is what we all strive to be. And project-based learning, mostly through our science and social studies departments. So we have one, as again, as we transition into our semester classes, we're finding our way to find out how to best maximize our time, because it's a transition of time. They have a longer block for a shorter amount of time. So this first semester, we're taking a look at that, and then hopefully we'll be able to perfect everything in the second semester. But their staff members are being trained, the teams are working together, the projects have been created, and we're excited for those things. And go from there. But, you know, like I said, I'm a proud principal here at Metz, and I hope that we're making you guys proud, we're moving the needle, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Any comments? Mr. DiMaria.
I want to get out of here and go watch the game, but I can't let it go. Make sure your staff knows that we really appreciate the great work that's going on over there. The numbers are showing it, but just the attitude that we're getting out of Metz is improving. And let the staff know that we appreciate it very much, all the whole staff.
Thank you.
Will do.
Any other comments?
Couple of things. First, thank you for a great presentation, and thanks to the staff for supporting you. They're doing a great job, and we appreciate that. You alluded to how four-by-four facilitates the continuity of learning. For those of us, well, I know, but for those of us who may not know about what four-by-four means, can you talk about that a little bit, what four-by-four?
Absolutely. So from an AB schedule, it's where science and social studies will be being taught 42 minutes per day every other day. And so you had science, and you had social studies, and you have science, and you have social studies, you have science, and you have social studies. It could be a bit difficult in today's day and age of, you know, learning about, you know, the government this day and cell membranes this day, and then taking a day off and getting back to government and then going back to cell membranes. So with input of our departments, we talked to the department to see if they were on board with this, and they were very so much aboard. They're the content experts. This is what they've gone to school for, this is what they're certified from Virginia for. So, you know, it's going to be a transition, but they'll have one class every day, not that A-B day, A, you know, every day, and they'll have it for a longer period of time. So it's going to be condensed, but it's going to be, it's going to be worked upon, and so they'll learn about cell membranes every single day and let that flow in there. And also, some of the indirect types of things is you only have three subject areas, three core subject areas now instead of four. So less things to focus on. They'll be able to take the rest of all tests earlier in December since we've moved to our new schedule, and so there'll be less testing when it comes to those, all those four or five tests that our eighth graders have to take, which is a lot. So that's a bit of the transition. Does that make sense?
Perfect. Thank you, I appreciate it. And thank you again for the great presentation.
All right. Thank you.
Next up, Osborne High School, CIP, Mr. Michael Flugrath.
Good evening, Chairman Williams, Dr. Newman, school board members. Mike Flugrath, Principal Osborne High School. With great pride, I present to you the updates to our Continued School Improvement Plan and our efforts made this school year, 2019, 2020 school year. Osborne High School is committed to providing multiple opportunities for students to succeed. Okay? We're very proud of our Blue Ribbon School status, our award-winning robotics program, our avid Eagle Writing Centers, freshman transition program. We have a lot to be proud about at Osborne High School. We want to provide our kids multiple chances to find their niche and to succeed. Our needs assessment, areas of strength is probably the most difficult slide I had to do in this whole presentation. I call them glows. There's so many glows, I hate to just limit it to one part because I don't want to leave somebody out. But I'm very impressed with our students, first of all, their engagement, our student council, you know, the student voice. The students have been awesome, okay? Our Fine and Forming Arts Program continues to really impress me. They continue to do well. We had a great fall choral concert, orchestra concert, as Ms. Seberg mentioned, our fall play. Our band, Screaming Eagles, is still winning. Every time they go to competition, they're winning another trophy, which we proudly display in the main office. Career technical education's hitting out of park. Avid program's awesome. So we're providing different opportunities for kids to get help, right, with our Eagle Writing Center, different tutoring, youth salute program's great, DeKalis Girls. Students have been awesome, the staff, I've been really impressed with the talent we have there. We have a lot of talent in the room already, okay? And then the parents. So the parent involvement is another huge glow for me at Osborne. The PTSA led by Kathy Harrison, we had a couple meetings. She says the largest turnout she's ever had. It's the largest turnout I've seen at any high school I've been to. Okay, so we have parent involvement, they've actually added more on their plate to do. The Booster Club, the same thing. I've had an opportunity to go to Booster Club meetings. And we have this unique thing, we have parents with active students, but we also have parents who, students who have graduated, but they're still actively engaged and involved in our school, and that really powers us to have that involvement way beyond when their students leave. They really care about the growth of Osborne. Some areas we're focusing on. This quarter, we spent a lot of time with structures and procedures, putting structures in place, letting people know the expectations. We structured our ELT time. We tried to make it very clear for people what the expectation in adding structures. That includes our attendance plan, on-time graduation plan, which is reducing our dropout prevention, we're working on, and our culture responsiveness, working with our teachers, providing professional development on how to make a welcoming environment for kids and be aware of those little intricacies of different cultural needs and relationship building, really, or bridge building, as Dr. Newman would mention. First goal, optimize academic performance for our students. You notice some gray areas on the chart here. Those are where the KPIs don't apply in either the S or the accreditation, so we just grade them out. It's not applicable there. Our goals show that we have increased expectations for our students, okay, throughout each area. We want to continue to raise the bar in our increase for not only student learning, but college and career readiness. Our key areas are increasing our graduation rate while decreasing our dropout rate, right? That's our focus. We believe in the focus on instruction through the power of collaborative teams. And like Mr. Rupert mentioned, we instituted common planning time this year in our master schedule for our four core areas, so our teachers could have that collaborative planning time, they could work together, and that's going to be the engine that powers our instruction, as we recognized one of our biology collaborative team leader tonight for that award. Our counselors have met with all of our seniors to go over their progress and checks, graduation checks progress already, and now they're doing the rest of their caseload as well to make sure our students are on track, or we need to get them the supports they need, or provide alternate pathways for them to succeed. So we've already completed all our seniors, and we're also providing professional development to our teachers, focusing on literacy and particularly the vocab with LFS model. Our goal two is leadership team working in addition to recruit and retain quality teachers. We believe in empowering our teachers, providing them a voice, a mentorship. We provide multiple opportunities for leadership. This year, we had an opportunity to... multiple opportunities for leadership. This year we had the opportunity to, um, uh, reexamine all our department chair positions and hire our department chairs. Uh, one of the structures we created is instructional council, where I lead that instructional council, all the department chairs. We publish the agenda and the minutes to the whole staff, so everybody's included. We also created a faculty advisory committee where teachers have input on not just instructional, uh, leadership of school, but organizational and administrative side of, of how we make decisions. Um, we want their voice heard and we want to have given multiple opportunities to grow within our vision. Forging relationships are, are PBI, uh, PBIS. I have to reference one of my favorite teachers right here who's helping to lead that. Uh, it's forging meaningful, uh, meaningful relationships with our community. Um, we have creative positivity ambassadors. These students go out and build relationships. Uh, for example, they'll go to cafeteria and sit with kids that may be by themselves or forge, you know, uh, bill, bullying prevention programs. Um, the students have already created some interactive videos. They did one on a flip grid about respect where we used our ELT time to teach other kids about what respect is and how that, how that is at Osborne High School. What does respect mean to you? Also doing one on attendance, and the students are creating another video on, um, anti-bullying campaign. So we want to raise student voice. We're instituting a program called RSVP. It's sponsored by the National Association of Secondary School Principals. It's about raising student voice and participation, right? So we want their opinion heard. We've had some panel meetings already. We have another one next week where the students, it's their school, they get to take the leadership on it, whether it's painting, parking lot spaces, or different programs throughout the school. Uh, we have completed our first positivity challenge where we had everybody on staff send a positive email or phone call home uh, to, to a member. Usually it's a, a student we wanted to gather that maybe didn't get the recognition always, but, you know, call them out. We've already completed that first phase. And our hashtag one Osborne camp, campaign is starting to grow in its effectiveness as far as communicating our glows. We wanted to use that as a hashtag to get all the glows out of all the great things that are going on. Our fourth goal, maintaining a safe and orderly school. We have weekly, uh, meetings with our admin team. We call them disciplined norming meetings. Okay? We had developed this, uh, SIRs program. It's a electronic way, um, student incident referrals. They can, teachers can report them. We go through each one. We get feedback to the teacher. We apply whatever interventions. We'll make sure it's consistent across the board for all our APs and then report a summary to the entire staff, whether you've got one or not. We'll say, for example, we had seventeen SIRs on tardiness this week or whatever, you know, because we give them feedback to close the loop. Um, we also established attendance monitoring system, letters going home, parent conferences happening, um, way to get more kids in school, stay in school, engaged in class. Uh, we care about you. We want you to stay. And there's also monitor with some accountability pieces as well. Okay. Um, our PBIS system, we talk about empowering, engaging, and excelling. Those are our three attributes there to shape our school culture. We're talking about positivity awareness at school functions, empowering student voice, and a recognition system for academic and growth. And some of these recognitions, we have formal recognitions, but also informal, such as our positivity challenge, our hashtag one Osborne, our RSVP program. Uh, PBIS is also working on international night. We're collaborating with Baldwin on that to have inclusive environment. Um, so a lot of ways to, uh, raise awareness, but also provide recognition to kids, you know, for positive behavior. On-time graduation, three areas. We want, again, kid, we want to create a caring and welcome, welcome environment. We need to show the kids we care about them. Okay? Once we do that, we have risk factors. We know that those kids that we have to focus on it are potential, uh, uh, dropout issue or possible, you know, hurdles for graduation. So we look at those kids at risk. We provide them the supports and interventions early on. We've already started doing this with our counselors. Okay? And then if need be, we provide them alternate pathways. So it's GED program, online learning. We're working on a blended learning academy, things like that, to get those students an alternate way so they can still achieve the graduation goal. In closing, I'm very excited to be here. Okay? Um, I'm impressed with our students, staff, and our community. Uh, this first quarter to me was a way of, of discovery, you know, kind of learning more and more about what we, Osborne's all about, um, from the students to the alumni, to the staff. Um, and I'm very impressed. Uh, I'm excited to be here. I'm glad I'm here. Uh, we have a lot of glows, a lot of positive things going on. Uh, we have a great infrastructure of good things and we're just fine tuning that focus, um, really with the strength of our students. Our, our students are awesome. So thank you, uh, for allowing me to be here and, uh, I appreciate your support.
Thank you. Any comments?
There's a, so many great things that you pointed out that we're doing right. And what I'm most impressed with is that you don't shy away from the things that we're doing wrong and what we need to do to fix them. Um, so we, we need to celebrate what we're doing right and continue to, to work on what's not going right. And the fact that you're focusing on those is, is great and I appreciate that very much. And I appreciate your, um, uh, you being new here and your involvement in our community already. Mr. Flugrath came to our alumni association. He didn't win anything. Um, but he brought his bride. He brought Mrs. Flugrath, and I hope you had a good time. And when I, I didn't introduce all the politicians there, it's, it's not worth it. Um, but I introduced him and most of those people don't have kids in the school. And he got a rousing ovation. Uh, and I was very proud that you've already made an impact on people that aren't even in the school. Am I, am I right, Michelle? Yes. And so I, I was very proud that you were there and that you stayed till the end. I know your ball wasn't picked till closer to the end, so there was a reason to, but I, I feel like you would have anyway, and we appreciate you being there and everything you're doing at our high school. And hopefully Mr. Rupert will continue and his staff will continue to make your job easier as those kids come up and ready to work in the high school.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Just, I want to thank you and Dr. Newman for how responsive you are to the students because we, some of us were there during the week when students were bringing up issues and, and both of you took care of things immediately that, um, you know, there's a lot of things that may be out of sight of adults that the kids see and bring up and you guys are just so responsive to everything. And, and I know as a parent of a lot of kids who've been through there that that really matters to us as parents. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your support.
And I'll conclude. Um, first, thanks for your enthusiasm, the culture you're instilling. Um, I was talking to some young men today and they were commenting that they really felt like they were heard and they really appreciate, uh, your leadership specifically. So thank you for that. And thank you for your, your staff who stayed here and, um, who helped you with this presentation, another excellent presentation. They all knocked it out of the park. So, you know, you can rest easy now. Uh, but look forward to hearing more great things in the future. And, um, to all of you who are here tonight, uh, keep it up. We appreciate your work.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay. The final item on the agenda, which I think is going to take about three hours. Mr. DiMaria?
Yeah.
Finance and operations, draft, five-year forecast and capital improvement plan.
I'm proud of myself. We're not walking out.
Mr. Hawkins.
All right. Uh, so good, good evening. This is our, our, our formal presentation of the annual CIP. Uh, tonight, we're, the school board only approves one, um, one year at a time. So they, this coming year will be the FY21, uh, uh, column that you see. But we show it out at, at least an additional four more years, uh, just for planning purposes to, to put things, uh, out there that we need to be looking at and concentrating on in the upcoming years. First of all, to start off with the funding sources, uh, the school board has dedicated, uh, traditionally over the years, three million dollars toward the CIP. That number was not derived at by accident. It was based on an industry standard and common practice throughout, uh, is determined by objective, um, uh, boards to determine what was the best policy or the best practice for maintaining the amount of square footage that we have. The $557,000 and the $49,000 that you see in 2022 were carried over, were money that was not used in FY19. And we saved that money knowing that we were going to need these funds coming forth in '21 and '22. The major projects for FY21 are, continue to maintain our division-wide technology. These are not computers or laptops for the students, but these are infrastructure upgrades to keep our network running, um, to support all of the laptops and the computers in, within the schools. We continue to put, to, uh, update our bus fleet and keep it, uh, within the guidelines adopted by the Virginia Department of Education. All of our buses are within the 15-year, uh, guidelines that are, that are established. We've also been proactive in placing additional funds, uh, set aside in case we need them for, um, school bus additions to the fleet and for, uh, classroom trailers because our enrollment has bounced back this year. Uh, we, uh, enrollment has come back up. Uh, last year we had a dip of approximately a hundred students. We're back up over that again and our, our, our enrollment is again increasing. Um, and we predict it's going to continue to increase year by year. So at some point in time, without additional classroom space, we're going to, uh, without additional more, brick and mortar, we're going to need, uh, additional classroom space. So we, the school board has been proactive uh, in, in, in putting forward additional funding for classroom trailers should they be needed. In FY21, we'll also begin the process of, um, of, um, moving the central office away from its current location at 8700 Centerville Road to, uh, we believe, we have a gentleman's agreement, I think now with the city, uh, nothing in writing yet, to, uh, move over to the police station, the current police station, when the, uh, when their safety, their new safety building is, is built on Grand Avenue. So we will begin this summer with hiring an architectural engineering firm and to begin, um, planning for, uh, the transition over and the renovation of the, of current police station, uh, behind Osborne High School. Our two major projects this summer will be replacing the HVAC at Round and the roof at Mayfield. You'll see that Round is, um, was in, uh, 2019 or was approved in the 2020 budget, but we just didn't have enough time with the change in the calendar to be able to do that within the limited, uh, time that we have. So we postponed that project to this summer and, uh, assuming the school board approval, we will, uh, have a roof replacement at, uh, at Mayfield, uh, this summer as well. So those will be big, major projects. It'll take a lot of time and effort by our team. Uh, and we'll be, we're already, the engineering is, is being done as we speak and, uh, we hope to be able to, uh, assuming school board approval at our December school board meeting, we'll begin to issue the request for proposals, so the RFPs, and we plan to begin work on these projects as soon as the second that the children are out of school, um, in May. So that we will use every available day to be able to be up and ready by the time the school, uh, schools begin, um, in August of next, uh, the next school year. Going forward in FY, uh, in the out years, we, we have a variety of different things. Uh, this CIP proposal that you have in front of you tonight is not much different than what we have shown you in prior years, other than we have put on here, things that we need to be looking at, uh, going forward. For example, division-wide fire alarm system replacement. Our fire alarm systems are becoming, uh, old and outdated. Um, and we will need to begin, um, to start replacing those. And you'll see those in FY23, '24, and '25. And it will continue on probably from '26 to 2030 when we start doing those projects later on. Also, you'll see that we've had, um, we put in some additional funding for cooling towers and chiller replacement out in 2024 and '25. Those, well, we're looking at issue ways right now to where we might be able to mitigate some of those costs. We are now looking at maybe rebuilding some of those cooling towers and chillers instead of replacing them, um, which will come at a substantial cost. So those costs in '24 and '25 will, may be eliminated or come down substantially by the time we get to that, to get to that point in time. Overall, uh, the five-year, uh, CIP released about 20 million, almost $21 million worth of total projects. Um, but as I said, we are, we're concentrating tonight on 2021, which is $3,557,000. Um, we will have a, I think we're scheduled to have a public input session on the CIP at our next, uh, school board meeting. And school board, uh, consideration for approval will be at our December, uh, meeting. Are there any questions, concerns, comments that we'd like to make about the CIP?
Mr. DiMaria?
Four minutes to first pitch. Um, I just want to make it clear, as you did, this, uh, CIP has been before us many times. We have tweaked it. Um, there might not be a lot of discussion on it up here tonight, but there has been a lot of discussion on it. Uh, central office, a lot of money going into central office. Um, I want to make sure that everybody understands that in the long run, and even in the short run, it's going to save us money over what we're paying now in rent. Um, you know, so, uh, the, the large amount of money there is going to be, end up being a savings. You've got to spend money sometimes to save money. Um, the trailers at Dean, I want everybody to realize that we've moved Dean out to 2026 so far. Um, funding sources have to come up. Um, multiple funding sources have to come up. I'm worried about the state. I'm worried about the city. Um, 2026 is what we're shooting at now. I'm not putting that in stone, myself. We're putting it on the back burner here. Um, so we will continue to add trailers if we have to, and we will continue to, um, make Dean a, uh, good place for our children to learn for as long as we possibly can. Uh, Annie, thank you and your staff for all your work on this.
Thank you.
We do appreciate it, sir.
Comments? Um, thank you for your work on this. And one thing I want to mention, um, I know it's very difficult and I've been in the board almost 10 years now. Um, this is the most uncertainty I think we've had in terms of our funding going forward. So imagine trying to build a household budget with not knowing how much money was coming in exactly. So I know that makes it very challenging, but you and your staff have done, uh, Ms. Miller here and the rest of your staff, a great job with working with what we have. So thank you for that and hopefully we'll have more clarity as we go forward.
Thank you, sir.
Tonight's the first game.
Yeah. Move to adjourn. Are we done?
No.
We're not done?
Yes.
What do we have?
Five-year forecast?
You're doing the five-year?
You know, we don't, we can talk about the five-year forecast, but it really doesn't have a lot to do with the CIP. It just, I mean, we, I want to, maybe we should postpone that until we talk, till, till next month when we start talking over about the carryover request and the, uh, uh, end of the year funding for FY19. So, uh, to, to, tonight our concentration's on the CIP because we want to introduce that to the public so that we could have an input session at the next school board meeting. So, um, we'll postpone the, uh, five-year forecast until that time.
Thank you. Well, tonight starts the NBA season as well as baseball game, I guess. So, do you have a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Much by Mr. DiMaria. That was pretty quick. Second, Mr. Hamlin to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it six-zero. Have a nice evening.